The June 18, 2019 meeting of the City Council, the City of Springfield is called to order, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
...of the United States of America and the republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Clerk, if you please call the roll.
That will do.
Alderman Redpath.
Here.
Alderwoman Simpson.
Here.
Alderwoman Turner.
Here.
Alderman Fulgenzie.
Present.
Alderman Proctor.
Here.
Alderwoman DeCenso.
Present.
Alderman McMenamin.
Here.
Alderwoman Conley.
Present.
Alderman Donnelly.
Here.
Alderman Hanauer.
Here.
Mayor Langfelder.
Here.
Mr. Mayor, a quorum is present. Thank you. First item on the zoning agenda is property located at 2005.
Mayor. Pardon me?
Yep, Alderman Hanauer.
I think that Mr. Zirkel has requested that we go into exec session to discuss one of our zoning cases.
Yeah, I'll read it.
Could I make a motion?
First.
We go pending probable litigation? Is that what that's?
Yes, sir. Yes.
Point of order.
Alderwoman Simpson.
Is it possible to take, since we're going to go into executive session, can we go to the next zoning issues? Because I've got some people and they need to leave.
Sure. So, next item on the agenda, docket number 2019 through 2019-021 for the property located at 1800, 1806, 1810, and 1814 South 11th Street. I think that's one that was going to be continued.
Need to postpone it for 30 days?
It's been moved to continue it and seconded to continue it for 30 days?
Yes.
Any questions on the motion?
I would like to say that the attorney for the individual who is wanting this has indicated that they're willing to work with me and the community. They're not wedded to the gas station convenience store, and they're willing to work with me to come up with another idea that could be more palatable for that area.
Great.
So, we're going to be meeting and discussing what other options we have. I think will be, I think, an impetus for other developers also to do the same thing. Thank you.
Very good. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. So, next item is property located at 2005, 2007, 2011, and 2057 South 11th Street for docket number 2019-019, the motion for reconsideration. So, Alderman Hanauer wanted to move for executive session?
Yes, I'd like to request we go into exec session to, for probable.
Pending probable litigation?
Yes.
Second motion.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. We're adjourned for executive session.
I thought there was a baby on the way or something.
Me too.
(laughing). Sure. Sure.
So, next item on the agenda is property located at 2005, 2007, 2011, and 2057 South 11th Street, docket number 2019-019, motion for reconsideration Dollar General, is there a motion?
Discussion.
It's been moved and seconded to discuss. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
So, corporate council, you want to make comments, or should we, how do you want to proceed?
Do you want to see if the Alderman want to address it, or if the members from the Dollar General want to?
I know someone from Dollar General's here, so would you like them to come forward, or?
Absolutely. If you gentlemen could step to the podium, please.
And whoever's speaking, if you'd, I guess, state your name and how you represent the company or affiliated with it, that'd be great.
Dennis Albig, District Manager.
Thank you.
Eddie Palmisano, Regional Director.
Jacob Stauffer with the Overland Group, we're the company that actually owns the property that's in discussion here.
Great. So, I think the issue's been, as you know, is the maintenance of the property and the one on 11th and Ash was allowed to move forward at Dollar General's, you know, liability if it didn't go forward. And so, through that process, it came up with regards to questioning of the maintenance of the land, not necessarily what you're under construction, but other ones throughout the city. And it's been an ongoing problem, as well as trash and things of that nature. And I think, I've been talking to several individuals, there are some remedies going into the future. I didn't know if you want to expound on those, or you want me to expound on them, and you say yes or no, or however you want to proceed.
We'll defer to you, Mayor. I know that new contractors are in place for upkeep. Also, I'm happy to, we've developed eight stores in this area. I don't think there's ever been a time in the past seven years that we haven't had a store under development. We learned about this issue two weeks ago when I, when I got the newspaper article sent to me. So, I'm happy to give my cellphone to anyone here, and if there's ever a problem, you can call me. I'm sure these gentlemen will be happy to do the same. I was here last time, there was an issue, and like I said, we're somewhat a constant in this in that we don't, we're not, it's not our responsibility to maintain the stores, but we do, we can make sure that it will happen. I know that what, things that have been discussed is we're willing to go to some of these stores that need masonry dumpster enclosures and lockable dumpster enclosures to keep people out of the trash. We'll make sure that that happens one way or the other, whether we do it or we do it in partnership with Dollar General. We'll make sure that there are lockable dumpster enclosures so you don't get trash strewn on specific stores, including the store on 11th and Ash. I'll let these gentlemen to speak to other ongoing maintenance issues, but like I said, anyone who wants to get ahold of me, I'm happy to give my cellphone number to them, or you can always call Kurt Wilkie, who's our local council, and he and I speak every time there's an issue as well. He's just down the street. But we, like I said, we maintain a presence in the city and want to be a good partner with you guys in this store and future stores.
Okay.
Yeah, I would second that. So, I would say that, you know, we want to be a good partner, a good neighbor, and if there are issues, I am more than willing to give out my number, too. I live closer to St. Louis, but I'm in the area at least a couple times a month, and Dennis would be the main contact for us here in this particular area. And I'll tell you that we have had struggles here. So, I've been here two years, and I know what the struggles have been, and I feel like we've made strides in the stores to improve, especially with Dennis being here and being on top of it. And you have my commitment that we will do the right thing in these stores and get them right. And we have gotten new contractors out to our locations. They're currently working on the upkeep of the landscape. The grass situation should have all been taken care of, and, you know, I've partnered with Dennis, and we have said that if that becomes an issue, then we do something at the store level to take care of the grass or the landscape. And what I will tell you is, anytime we have issues here, I would, I would be open to any one of you reaching out to myself or Dennis to let us know what's going on, and we would be happy to help and get the issue resolved before it turns into a bigger issue.
Mr. Mayor.
Alderman McMenamin.
I'd just like to express my appreciation to Dennis Albig, the local manager, for coming to the MacArthur Store after our council meeting last Tuesday night. I said I had a list of 10 punch list items where improvement is needed, and I think you took pictures and you took note. I just want to review that list because I think it's important for our community to know what we're dealing with here and the improvements that we're expecting. So, there was uncut grass on the edges, weeds everywhere as tall as, you know, one or two feet tall in areas in the beds. There was dead wood in the, in the one mature tree. There was dead wood on the ground, limbs that have been there for months. There was bushes not trimmed for up to two years. Next to the in and out concrete ramps, there were holes as deep as a foot deep and a foot wide. They were trapping vehicles during the winter months when the snow does not make the empty holes apparent to our, to our customers, to the patrons, and I'm one of the patrons that patronizes that Dollar General. There were volunteer trees growing up through the intended evergreen trees. There was a leaning light pole sunk in concrete where the concrete and the pole has begun to lean. It leaned once before, and it's leaning again. So, Dennis, thank you for noting all those improvements that we expect, not just, not just at this Dollar Store, but all the Dollar Stores, because we really want Dollar General to be successful. They serve a useful purpose, and they can be positive for our, our community. But till now, we've just had bad neighbor problems with several of the Dollar General stores. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderwoman Turner.
I too appreciate the response. Unfortunately, it took this action in order to get the response, but I do appreciate the response. I had a very long conversation with Sarah Montgomery, who's the Senior Director of Store Facilities, and she went through all of the new things that the corporation was going to do that filtered down here, and they did include a new contractor for the, for the maintenance, and not just to cut the grass, but to mulch and trim, and, you know, so it looks compatible with the rest of the neighborhood, as well as fencing and dumpster locks and, and those kinds of things. And also, a mandate on the individual stores that they do police the, you know, the parking lots on a daily, on a daily basis in the morning when the store opens, and then again when it, when it closes. So, I do believe that to have a response from someone at that level illustrates the severity of the problem and the fact that Dollar General does want to correct it. I don't want anybody, I was, I was a little bit taken aback by some comments that were made in the media, and I just want to correct those. I am not opposed to Dollar General stores, not at all. I do believe that they serve a useful purpose, and they do, and there is a market for, for them. I'm not concerned about where they're located, because as you, as you can tell, they're in almost every ward except for maybe a couple. I think that they're in, probably eight of the 10 wards have a Dollar General, so that's, that's not my issue. My issue was pure and simple, that they needed to be more compatible and better, and better neighbors. And, and I would say again that if there was a residence that was exhibiting such egregious behavior, neighborhood associations and all of the other good neighbor organizations would be up in arms with those residences. So, I just felt like it's my responsibility to hold the businesses that are located in, in our neighborhoods to the same standard. So, I do appreciate the response, and I am hopeful that it will not be a one-shot, we're going to take care of it, and then, you know, once this store is up and running that we, that things go back to normal. Because, as you said, in the, in the eight years that I've been here, there's been a Dollar General going up almost every year. So, I, I can only imagine that in the next 12 or 18 months, there'll be another Dollar General going up somewhere, and I want you to know that we are all going to be watching these stores. We're all going to be watching the progress or lack thereof that's being made, and we won't find ourselves at this juncture. We will address it earlier, before the stores start being built.
Alderman Redpath.
You know, this, this whole debate has opened our eyes to a lot of things, and I think it's going to set a precedent for how we're going to look at all the businesses in Springfield to make sure they're doing it. After we had the discussion last week, I made a point to drive around and see as many of the Dollar General stores as I could to see how their maintenance was going on. And I can tell you that some of the lawns had already been cut, and the, and the trash had been picked up, so I know that you got, got right on it, which was great. But this is a message to the rest of the community, that Dollar General just happened to be the poster child on this, with, and no offense, but that's just the way it happened to be. But when I did drive by a couple of them, I seen some businesses right next door that had grass two foot tall. So, guess what? Everybody needs to open their eyes, because this is going to be something, we're going to keep our city clean, and we're going to do our best to make sure that stores are maintained. And I think it's going to also generate some new rules that we're going to put, put in place for people with habitual problems, and we don't want that. We absolutely want Dollar General here, as, as some of the Aldermen said, but the bottom line is, is that we're going to make sure our city's clean and very, you know, very maintained, so, thank you.
Alderwoman Simpson.
I, I agree 100% with Alderman Redpath, and I think this has opened our eyes to what, some things we need to do with other businesses. We should not have such difficulty getting in touch with someone up the food chain that can actually make a decision. So, I think it behooves us to make sure that without, not, not just using Dollar General, but with other businesses, that we know where their corporate headquarters is, who the person responsible is, and the person that we can get in contact with without having to go through layers and layers to get to who we need to get to, to make sure that our concerns are being heard.
Any other discussion? I don't know if you had anything else, but we appreciate taking the time.
I would just like to thank the council, and I'm always available for contact, and I appreciate this open line of communication with you guys. I think that will go a long way and be a big step in our relationship in the future, and we want to represent Springfield well.
And I need all your business cards. Thank you.
Thank you.
For being here, we really appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
She said she'd like to get your business cards, so we definitely. Thank you, appreciate it. Thank you.
Next item on the agenda, docket number 2019-022 for the property located at 1152 North Rutledge Street, Parcel 1, and 1128 North Rutledge Street, Parcel 2. Petitioner is Shunk, Corporation President, zoning classification is B1 Highway Business Service District, Section 155.033, request of zoning relief reclassification to B2, General Business Service District, Section 155.034, and a variance of Section 155.050, screening to allow for no screening on the west and south property lines, or in the alternative a use variance for Parcel 1 and Parcel 2 to allow for operation of a moving and transfer office in the B1 zoning district. Springfield-Sangamon County Regional Planning Commission recommendation is denial of the request of B2 zoning, but recommends a use variance to allow for the operation of a moving and transfer office limited to 12 trucks with a length less than or equal to 35 feet, as depicted on the exhibits submitted with the petition, and approval of a variance of Section 155.050, screening to allow for no screening on the west and south property lines. Planning and zoning commission recommendation is accept the recommendation of Springfield-Sangamon County Regional Planning with the following conditions and restrictions. The use be limited to a moving and transfer operation at a maximum of 12 box trucks are allowed on the subject property, and all box trucks are limited to 35 feet in length. That the parking plan submitted with the petition be followed unless the city engineer, traffic engineer approves otherwise. That the variance of the screening applies to this specific use and does not apply to any other permitted use. That all light fixtures, current and future, would be compliant with the light regulations specifically listed in the code, eliminating light trespass disability glare, and that a dumpster enclosure be provided, subject to Section 155.480. Chair will entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, make a motion to accept the Planning and Zoning Commission recommendation.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to accept the Planning and Zoning Commission recommendation. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, vote yes. Those?
Does someone else want to speak?
Oh, yep. Do you like to come up? Oh, I think it's a different.
Maybe not.
Anybody wish to address the council on this zoning case on Rutledge? Any, all in favor of the motion as proposed, vote yes. Those against, vote no. Thank you. Yes. Vote yes?
Yes.
And the motion passes, 10 voting yes, none voting no. And that concludes the zoning portion of our meeting. The Chair recognizes Treasure Busher for presentation of the financial report. Oh, that's right.
Thank you, Mayor Langfelder. The Corporate Fund in the month of May had a beginning balance of $7,628,716. We took in total receipts of $11,277,675. We had total disbursements of $11,702,276, which left the Corporate Fund with an ending balance in the month of May of $7,204,115. This concludes my report, Mayor Langfelder.
Thank you. Is Chair will entertain a motion to approve the financial report?
Some will move.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. At this time, the Chair recognizes Bob Laurent and Amy Beadle, if you'd like to come forward. There's a presentation with regards to sports complexes and what we're able to support as a community. For those of you that may recall, we've had several entities express interest, in particular the sports complex on the east side, UIS has expressed interest. There's been a group interested in the Shields area, so what I did was pull together a group of individuals that would provide guidance with regards to how we move forward with such requests, and I asked Bob Laurent, who used to run, maybe the Pitting Center at one time, and Amy Beadle to help co-chair that under the direction of Scott Dahl, the Convention Visitors Bureau Director. So, if you'd like to give a overview and introduce our guests, that'd be great.
Absolutely. Thank you, Mayor, appreciate it. Four months ago, the Springfield Convention Visitors Bureau contracted with Sports Facility Advisory Group to conduct Springfield's first sports tourism marketing analysis that's not site or location specific. I'm happy to introduce Dan Morton, who's here tonight with SFA, to give us a summary of that analysis. Dan?
And sorry, this came up at the end of the presentation for some reason, so I'm just flipping through so you get a preview right now. Back to the beginning, so we can start at the top. All right. Thanks for the introduction. As mentioned, my name's Dan Morton. I'm a strategic advisor with the Sports Facilities Advisory. Appreciate you taking the time. Let me present what has been a couple months of deep dive and in-depth analysis that we've been doing with the team. I'm going to give you a high-level overview. There's a lot of information in this document, as well as in our actual deliverable and report, so I'm going to go pretty quick and give you a high-level overview, about 20, 25 minutes, and then there'll be plenty of time for questions as we go forward. In terms of what I'm going to cover, I'll give you a project overview, so a little more detail than was just given, in terms of what was our specific scope and deliverables, and then what does success look like as we defined it for this project, working with the project team. I'll give you an overview of who we are and what we do in terms of SFA, Sports Facilities Advisory, and Sports Facilities Management. And then I'll get into the actual analysis, give you an overview of what we looked at, some of the different factors within the market, both locally and regionally, give you an overview of recommended facilities that we believe are warrant further analysis in terms of what's demanded in the market, local and regionally, and then what those facilities look like and their potential costs. And then, as the focus of this project, and we'll get into it in more detail, but it's really sports tourism oriented or travel for youth and amateur events that drive economic impact or new spending in the market that wouldn't be there but for events at a facility. So, I'll give you some industry ranges of how we see this industry for facilities performing, and I've got some examples of facilities that we've been involved in and we are currently still involved in that are set up for, for some similar purpose and the communities that they were developed in. And then I'll also go through some public-private partnership examples in terms of how these facilities today are being funded, and then we'll have time for discussions and questions I mentioned. Well, you have the presentation in front of you, so hopefully this will move forward, but I'll go ahead and keep a summary of where we are throughout the process. So, in terms of the project overview specifically, there we go, of our specific scope, okay? So, we were engaged for, to produce, by the city, to produce a market opportunity report related to development of new, enhancement of, or development of new sports tourism facilities. And as I mentioned, just to give you a definition of sports tourism, the way we're looking at it, we're talking about youth and amateur sports tourism for events that are participative in nature, where people are traveling to participate, either themselves or their children, across the country for single-day, multi-day, week-long events in different locations and destinations. And so, those are really non-local visitors that are brought from outside of the market into the market to spend, to participate, but then they also spend in things like retail, restaurants, hotels, et cetera. And so, there are facilities specifically dedicated to those types of events and drawing in those events in, in different communities, and communities invest in them for different reasons, which we'll, we'll get into. So, that's the focus of, of our analysis. As was said earlier, this is an unbiased approach, third-party look at what is the market opportunity and what is the market demand for a regional destination where, in the Springfield area. And so, our engagement is actually broken into two phases, one being that we're engaged for and one that is optional, if, if that's something that should be moved forward with. So, the first phase consisted of some kickoff, existing data review and market analysis for Springfield, familiarizing ourselves with what's already been done to look at this, what the community has looked at, what considerations, and what are the makeup of this community, both locally and regionally. We then came onsite a couple months ago to meet with the project team, representatives from various organizations, and the Sports Advisory Committee, to really understand and do a deep dive of what does success look like for this, for these types of facilities if they were to be developed in Springfield. And so, just to reiterate, we're not talking about a specific site, a specific group, or anything like that, we're simply looking at what's the opportunity and what's the demand. So, we define success for if something was developed, regardless of who develops it, what would it mean for the city in terms, for this to be successful? And I'll give you an overview of what we came up with and what the, the team shared and what we looked at in terms of our study. So, then our deliverable is a market opportunity report that goes through our findings in the market, what we believe the demand is, and what was, what we believe could be worth studying as a future next step. And so, in that is specific facility spaces, sizes, inventory of spaces, and then cost to develop for, again, those things that we met, we think warrant a further analysis. And so, that's the deliverable, and that's what I'll go through today. Phase two, which is the optional portion, which we believe is the right next step if it's something that the community is interested in, is to develop a detailed financial forecast and economic impact analysis for these types of facilities. And so, not to get ahead of ourselves, but we've got recommended, a range of recommended facilities that we think could be studied. The next step would be saying, okay, what's, what's the right first move in phasing this project? What could have the most impact? What fits in with what's currently happening? And how do those assets perform? So, you understand what the realities of both operations and impact to your community could be. And so, that would be what happens in that optional phase, and we'd also have some summary narrative report to support it if that's something that's moved forward with. And so, just to reiterate, phase one, right now, we're at the market opportunity level, and I'll get into what that means. So, as I mentioned, we met with the project team to define success for this facility. And so, first and foremost, for facilities, first and foremost is really to serve as a driver of non-local visitors who wouldn't be in this community but for participating in tournaments and events at a new or new facilities. And so, we define non-local just from an industry perspective for youth and amateur sports as anyone who travels from outside of 90 minutes from a market. And that's general, sometimes there's, you know, that's shrunk if it's a more condensed market, and that's expanded if it's a more rural market, but generally, people from outside of 90 minutes will come in for a tournament, and they'll purchase a hotel room, which is what allows us to say those people are spending in your community and quantifying that spend. So, we look at outside of 90 minutes as the non-local visitation, and that's out to four hours, and there's certainly people who travel further, but between 90 minutes and four hours is your main catchment area for regional youth and amateur sports tournaments and events. And so, the number one, you know, and these aren't necessarily in order, but one of the things we heard was that this, these facilities, if they were developed, regardless of how they're developed, for the city to be interested, need to be a driver of economic impact, heads and beds, and spending in the community. Then beyond that, we also heard to expand the brand of Springfield as a destination that's affordable, accessible, and family-friendly. That's something that is unique to this destination and is important in your main catchment area for regional youth and amateur sports tournaments and events. And so the number one, you know, and these aren't necessarily in order, but one of the things we heard was that this, these facilities, if they were developed, regardless of how they're developed, for the city to be interested, need to be a driver of economic impact, heads and beds, and spending in the community. Then beyond that, we also heard to expand the brand of Springfield as a destination that's affordable, accessible, and family-friendly. That's something that is unique to this destination and is important in our industry. Everything starts with facilities, but it's about destinations then, and why you would visit this place over somewhere else. And here you have a lot of advantages in that this is already a destination for your historical things and things that people want to do. And so pairing those with sports facilities creates an experience that's different than just going out to a soccer field or going out to a court. And so it's capitalizing on the brand you already have and expanding what you mean to the overall region in terms of visitors. But then also, this isn't just a sport, this wouldn't just be sports tourism assets. Most sports tourism happens on the weekends, and so during the week, there'd be the opportunity to provide community-based assets that create access for the community to facilities that they would not have access for but for a project like this for sports tourism. And so that's weekday use for practices and recreation and meetings, et cetera. And so that's important also, as we heard, as a definition of success to the project team and to the city. And then lastly, this can't be a burden, needs to be operationally self-sustaining and limiting ongoing subsidy requirements. So those four things are the main things that we're looking at in terms of how these facilities could be successful if developed in Springfield. So again, I'll be brief on this, just a brief background on SFA and SFM. As I mentioned, Sports Facilities Advisory, Sports Facilities Management. We were founded in 2003. We've served over 2,000 communities and 10 billion-plus planned venues. Now, that's important to say that not all our facilities move forward, but we qualify our clients to say that if we believe there's a chance for something to work, we'll be engaged and work with you. And so we've looked at a lot of different assets across the country and some international. We do about 110 studies per year on the SFA side, so that gives you a volume of what communities we're working in. We certainly have relationships with colleges and professional athletes and professional sports, but 99% of our work is on the community level, not looking at big stadiums, like spectator events, like I said earlier, but really participative events that have impact on communities. So I won't read all of this, just give, turn your eye to the last one, which is really the mission of both our companies, and that's really to partner in improving the health and economic vitality of the communities we serve and the clients we serve. And that mission is across our two companies, and that's what we're focused on. In terms of our services, on the SFA side, we focus on the planning and funding of these facilities. So we put together the market studies, feasibility documents, and funding documents to help them move forward. And then on the SFM side, we serve as managers in facilities. And that can look like a couple of different things. That can be full-time management, where those employees are full-time employed by us and live and work onsite, or we also have consultive services where we help facilities get up and running. What I'll say, I won't go into too much detail here, but what I will say is that we don't assume that we manage facilities that we study. We have clients that hire us that already manage facilities and want to know what the market opportunity is. We have municipalities that hire us to say our Parks and Recreation Department's going to manage it. And then we have others that say we want a third-party manager. But what we do is we look through the lens of management for everything that we stud, that we study. So all of our analysis work is based on real-world benchmarks and metrics we have from both operating and being, having relationships within the industry, say, here's the most realistic and accurate information that we can provide on the front end so that communities and our clients can make the best decisions with that information. And so we look through that lens to say, at the end of the day, we could be asked to manage, and we have to be able to live up to the numbers that we put in place, but we know someone else could too. It could be a city, it could be a Parks and Recreation Department, it could be another third party. So that's the ethic that we look at and we work together in to make sure we're providing that information. So in terms of the specific project now, I'll get into our work. Again, I'm going to be high-level, there's a lot of details here, and we'll have time for questions, but I'm going to go pretty quickly. One thing I'll say to start is we casted, we cast a really wide net when we're doing this. There are a lot of different activities that people travel for to participate in, from bowling to ping pong to basketball to soccer. There's a lot of different activities. What we're doing is we want to, we want to understand what the market opportunity is to potentially develop facilities that have the chance to fulfill those definitions of success. And so we cast a wide net, but we hone in pretty quickly on what are the sports activities and spaces that have the potential to be consistent drivers of that non-local visitation for sports tourism to meet those definitions of success. So as I get into the market overview, we've moved to where we've done some of that honing in, and we have some specific facilities that we're, and activities that we're looking at that we know have the potential to meet those definitions of success. So to start, I'll start on the local market. As I mentioned, the main goal here is sports tourism, regional destination, but we know it's valuable to be a community asset, to create access to folks that wouldn't have access to these facilities but for projects like this. And so everything we do is analysis based on drive times. So for your local population, we really define your catchment area as about 30 minutes. There's certainly people who come from further, but 30 minutes is the most reliable impact area for serving communities, and the closer you get to the facility, the more people would use the facility. So here's just some examples of demographic factors we look at. We look at a lot more and a lot more detailed drive times, but some examples of population, income, age, spending on regulation, elections, things like that. And then the maps are then distributions of where's the population centers, where are the income centers, et cetera, so we understand what the community dynamics could be. As I mentioned, this is site-agnostic, we're not talking about a specific site, but in order to look at this locally, we did look at a centralized location in Springfield to give you a general idea. Now where, you know, if something moved forward and there was a specific site, obviously some of these factors would change, but generally, this is a look at the local market. From a regional perspective, moving, you know, a site around Springfield wouldn't really impact too much on what you, your potential could be. Obviously, the site would have to meet certain characteristics like being accessible and having access to hotels and retail, et cetera, but that could move and won't change the recommendations, if that makes sense. From there, we also look at local service providers. So what's currently in the market that people are participating in? So where are the court facilities? Where are outdoor multipurpose fields for soccer, lacrosse, football, et cetera? Where are diamond fields? And now you start to hear me talk about specific facilities, and this is the honing in, right? We're looking at assets, and we'll get to it in just a second, that have the ability to drive a high volume of sports tourism on a reliable basis and close to year-round, but obviously, there's some seasonality. And so we've looked at where are those facilities, what are their drive times, what do they offer, what's the quality, who manages them? So we understand how people are participating locally, what opportunities they have, and what gaps there may be. We also then look at what does participation look like? So if we define what our population is, where they're playing, we also want to know who is playing and what's the volume. And so what you're seeing here is just one of our data sets for specific data on sports participation rates for a variety of activities, all the way through, from basketball through some of your, you know, wrestling, cheerleading, field hockey, et cetera, that can happen on these different assets. And what participants that we believe are in this market, both locally for 30, out to 30 minutes, subregionally in 60 minutes, and then regionally, about 240 or four-hour drive time for what's the volume of people that could potentially participate in this facility? So then, skipped on on me, but we'll look at then the regional market as a defined local market. Now we're looking regionally. You heard me define it earlier, 90 minutes to out to four hours is really our main catchment area for regional youth and amateur sports tourism. Within that, there's about 22.5 million people accessed within four hours of this facility. And so with that, you start to hit some other major metropolitan areas and getting in. So this, we feel comfortable with this being a central location that people want to travel to. Specifically, just give you some examples, and you'll get to it, and we'll see it on the facilities list, is a lot of these facilities that currently exist are in places like the Chicagoland area, where if you have to travel there, that's a different level of expense, a different level of accessibility, a different level of, you know, experience going there as opposed to going to a destination like this. And so we think there's some advantages that this location has in that context. Then we look at what events are happening, right? So where are people currently traveling to? So if we know where they're playing locally, where are they then traveling to and participating in tournaments? So this is a sampling of our research, there's a lot more, hundreds of tournaments, this we've looked at in that four-hour drive time, to say where are they participating, how are they playing, what are the dates? Is it a day-long? Is it a week-long event? What's the price point? What level are they playing at? Are they high school kids? Are they U-14? All those different details help to us to understand what's currently happening, sets the climate of what's happening in this region, so we can understand what we believe could be brought to a facility like this. And then we also look at the actual facilities. And so this is, again, listing similar to local, but out to four hours, actually, three and a half hours, we've got more, but we cut it off there for this presentation of what facilities there are. And so you'll see that there's probably a lot more court facilities, but there aren't ones that are set up with the inventory and the business model to host sports tourism. And so these facilities are focused on ones who could host and who are hosting events, so we understand what's currently happening and what could be the potential in the region. And so we looked at this for courts, for outdoor multipurpose fields, for baseball, softball, but this is just a sampling of court. All that other information's within our report, but it gives you an idea of what type of information we're looking at, sets the stage of what types of facilities are out there that people are currently traveling to. And so this is an interesting, I'll explain these charts, and if you have questions, we can talk about them. So this now is looking at those three categories of facilities. So indoor courts, where we can do things like basketball and volleyball and cheerleading, dance, et cetera. Multipurpose fields on the outdoor side, which are for soccer, lacrosse, football, field hockey, rugby, et cetera, long-field sports. And then baseball, softball fields, where you've got different size and age groups for how they play. And so looking at those three main surfaces as being the most reliable for drawing in sports tourism, we've looked at if you were to build, or if someone were to build, or if they were to be developed, different-sized facilities, how much they would compete with existing facilities in terms of a percent of inventory. And so what this is saying on the court side is that if an eight-court facility was developed, you would meet 100% of the inventory in one single location for an eight-court facility. So the largest facility within the region is eight basketball courts. And so if that was developed, you'd meet that. You'll see for multipurpose fields, if you develop 12, you're hitting 71% of the facilities you're as big as, and then, you know, the various levels. So it starts to have, give us an understanding of what it would take to compete with the largest facilities and draw in events. And so from there, that's an example of how we're looking at it, but then we got into what facilities we recommend could have an impact in this, in this region and could meet those definitions of success. And so we'll get into a facility overview of the actual recommendations that we're making in terms of the size, order of magnitude of facilities that could be, could reach those definitions of success and could warrant more analysis. So I'll just give you a brief explanation of this. What this is showing is what we believe the market opportunity and demand is for regional facilities to generate sports tourism, and then the facility that we've recommended that could reach that and could warrant more analysis, and I'll get into more details. But again, separating those specific facility types, from a court perspective, based on the facilities that are out there, based on the events and based on the region, we believe there's demand for between six and 10 court facility to meet that demand and generate significant tourism. What we've recommended, because we're not only focused on generate the most heads and beds, we're also focused on what's operationally optimized and limiting subsidy requirements and hopefully being self-sustaining, right? So we have to balance those two things. We've recommended an eight-court, 16-volleyball-court facility to analyze, and I'll get into the size of that in a second. From an outdoor baseball field perspective, gets a little more complicated because you have a lot of more different sizes, whether you're playing softball or Little League or whether you're playing high school baseball. But in general, the market demand is about eight to 12 fields, and so we've recommended a really flexible facility, and you'll hear me say that as a trend. We're looking at the most flexible amenities that can be used in a multitude of ways. But we've recommended a total of eight fields, different sizes, so you can use them in different ways. A total of eight fields that can be up to 12 of your smaller fields to meet that, that demand. Then on the outdoor multipurpose perspective, we believe that it's about 12 to 14 fields would be, being competitive within the region. And so we've recommended eight standalone multipurpose fields, full-size. But what's key here is that these facilities are developed to be as flexible as possible with synthetic turf and the ability to change them. So those baseball fields can accommodate multipurpose fields. And so while we have eight standalone that don't reach that, that market demand, we have the ability to do up to 16 over the baseball courts, or baseball fields, that get you into the range of being a major, one of the largest facilities and best facilities in the region without duplicating spaces. And so we've recommended efficiencies there, and we think about operations and optimizing what that bottom line looks like. And in addition to that, we have some family entertainment center recommendations. These facilities can serve to improve the guest experience, things like rock climbing walls and arcades, all the way to laser tag to bowling. There's a lot of different amenities, but we see them as very helpful in these types of facilities to both improve the experience of guests coming in, add that fun factor back to sports, but also be a revenue driver for the facility and help with the bottom line. So I just want to give you a little more context in terms of sports tourism and the size of these facilities. Most of the time, in order to be large enough and have an inventory large enough to serve tournaments and events, facilities are overbuilt to the local demand and local population, which creates a scenario where they're not optimized from a bottom-line performance, where they could require subsidy or they don't perform, you know, how they're expected to from bottom line. But that's in order to generate heads and beds. And so I'm not setting expectations of how this would perform, I just want to give you that context. If we were looking just locally what the demand is, we would not be recommending an eight-court facility. And so we have to balance what the, what being competitive in the region for sports tourism is versus what the operational bottom line looks like, because again, the goal is this facility can't be a burden on the city or on anyone who develops it. And so we have that in mind. You may say, well, 10 courts, why don't we just do that and be the biggest? We don't believe that will be maximizing the bottom line. And so we took that into consideration in making sure that you're competitive in the region, but also keeping in mind what the goals of the operation would be. So I won't focus too much time on this, this is the details of the actual facility, but just to give you a scale of size for that eight and 16-court facility, it's about 122,000 square feet. That includes the court space, the FEC area, and then flex space to be tournament-capable. And so that's the right food and beverage operation, the right offices, restrooms, support spaces to really create a great experience when you're going into these facilities. The only thing else, other thing I'll highlight is we talked about, a lot about sports. What we really view these as is inventory of space and inventory of time. And so a facility like this has 65,000 square feet of flat floor, open space that can be used for basketball and volleyball and cheer and dance, but can also be used to accommodate consumer shows and trade shows and potential overflow from convention centers and things like that. Certainly, this isn't recommended to be built with the same finishes as a convention center would, but it has that open space for events that can be beneficial from a city perspective, but also then from a revenue and heads and beds perspective. So again, thinking about these as flexible spaces. Then from an outdoor perspective, you can see the details of the different fields, their dimensions, the space they take up. We've also recommended support buildings to make sure that we have the right tournament experience. There's a support building for every four fields so that people have access to concession stands, to restrooms, storage, et cetera. At this size facility, there would be a requirement, recommendation for just under 2,000 parking spaces to accommodate, and it would take up a total of 133 acres. Now again, I want to reiterate where we are in the process. What we're not doing here is recommending that a 133-acre complex is developed and is the right facility for this community. What we're saying is here is the volume of space and what it would take of these spaces that could meet your definitions of success. And so part of that next phase would be to say, what's the right phased approach? Is it to go after and look at indoor as an isolation and have that, you know, and see what that impact is, and that may be the right move, or, you know, any of the interchangeable parts? And so I just want to make sure, we're not saying the only way you have an impact is 133 acres, and I'm going to get to cost in a second, and you'll have the same reaction to that, but we're saying here's the overall grouping of spaces that we believe warrant some analysis and the sizes that would hopefully reach your definitions of success and the space that they take up. And so from there, we put together costs. We have a lot more detail in this, this is a high-level overview. Within the actual deliverable, you'll have breakdowns of specific line items, how we've developed these costs. But for that total facility, it would be about $61 million. Again, we're not saying to build a $61 million facility, but the, all of those assets together, this is what they'd cost, just to give you an idea of magnitude. And so we'd probably see the indoor being in the $25 million range, and then the outdoor being, you know, 30 to 35, depending on what your parking, your site development, all the things that would be specific to the site. We can see a breakdown of the different categories of costs, between hard costs for developing of the actual physical assets, field and sport equipment, things like your court flooring or your goals outside or your base paths, things like that, other furniture fixtures and equipment for concessions and offices, et cetera, and then soft costs for construction. So this is all detailed, it's based on real world. We're developing facilities right now. We have eight in development where we know what's costing for all the specifics. And so what we've done is taken a conservative estimate to say, if you were to develop these facilities, here's what we'd expect it to cost in your location. So then, we talked a lot about the overall facilities, the sports tourism versus the local business model. Now we'll talk about why the communities and the private sector, as well as the public sector, are interested in these types of developments, and that's for that economic impact. And so we've given some industry ranges for what the per-asset economic impact generation could be in facilities like this. So you'll see this is both for the indoor and the outdoor assets, and at different levels thresholds, the industry average, high-performing, and the top-performing industry, what economic impact in terms of spending, direct spending, dollars in the market could be generated per asset, and then as a total asset. So if you were to develop the courts at the top-performing threshold, this facility could have the capability to produce $16 million annually in spending. And there's obviously ranges within that, there's a lot of different business models, and I'm going to give you specific examples of facilities we're involved in, why there's of facilities we're involved in, why there's such a wide range of how they could impact. But that starts us at the stage of what the potential could be in terms of how these are operating within the industry. So getting into those examples, I'll be quick on the front end. First is Rocky Top Sports World, this is a facility that we planned, opened, and we do manage this. These are going to go from, these are going to be, there's four examples, different examples of, of economic impact focused facilities. So these are facilities developed specifically to generate heads and beds and economic impact in the community. So this Rocky Top Sports World, it's 86,000 square feet indoor, and they have seven outdoor fields. It's a partnership between, it's in Gatlinburg, Tennessee. It's a partnership between the county, the city, and the school to come together and develop this facility, and then it's privately managed by us. So in terms of the metric we use in a lot of these facilities to determine how valuable it is to a municipality, or why you would make this investment, or why anyone would make this investment would be, is the amount of the dollars generated for every dollar spent on construction. So you can see in the Rocky Top example, the cost of construction was $23 million for every dollar spent. We anticipate, this is in year five of operations, so the year, first four years are actual, and then year five is booked for economic impact. We anticipate it to generate $170 million in economic impact over the first five years, which is $7.40 generated per dollar spent on economic impact over five years. So it gives you an idea of the, the metric that we're talking about. Another facility, Rocky Mount Event Center. This is an indoor facility, 165,000 square feet, Rocky Mount, North Carolina. It's in a downtown location. It's meant to be a downtown economic development driver, which is doing, we're seeing millions of dollars investment in properties around this facility. It just, it's just opened this year. But in terms of the impact, and I'll talk about the difference in these numbers, which will be important for you all. This facility costs $38 million to develop. This is only year one actual, because it's pretty new. But in terms of our forecasts, we anticipate it to generate about $70 million in economic impact, will be $1.84 generated for every dollar spent on construction. And so there's a big difference in that, but the key for these different communities is we see communities that are destinations have the ability to drive more economic impact. So if there's a reason for people to travel to a facility or a community beyond just the event, we see more spending on different things because there's more opportunity, but also it's somewhere where they're going to stay longer and spend more. And so Rocky Mount is not a tourism destination on its own. This facility is, and so you see it's a little less, significantly less in terms of the impact. Rocky Top, Gatlinburg, Tennessee is the gateway to the Smoky Mountains. It's a tourism destination, and so they're seeing a lot more spending. And so those destination factors are important, as I mentioned, and what we believe here is pretty significant in terms of what you have, that people want to come and see, and they do currently. Then another one, Hoover Met Complex in Hoover, Alabama, indoor/outdoor mixed facility. Again, this is $80 million in construction. We anticipate $136.7 million in economic impact for $1.71 generated for every dollar spent on construction. And lastly is Myrtle Beach Sports Center. This is the most similar to just isolating specifically the indoor facility that we have recommended to be analyzed at this point. It's 100,000 square feet. This was open in 2015, and it's eight basketball courts, cross line of 16 volleyball courts. But this facility had a significantly lower cost to develop, which I'll get into a little bit, based on when it was developed. It's a lot more expensive. We've seen the increase in cost of develop significant over the last five years. But it costs $13.5 million for the first four years, these are actual numbers, and then year five is booked. We anticipate it to generate $118.7 million in economic impact, or $8.79 generated for every dollar spent. So then, the last thing I want to talk about is partnership examples. We talked about public-private partnership opportunity. A lot of the, you know, potential here and the, the goal is to get not just a municipality involved or just a private entity involved, but how could this facility come together involving the entire community? And so I've got some examples to start of why that's important, why it's needed, how these are being funded, and then some examples and facilities. So the need for public-private partnerships, as I mentioned, we've seen the cost of construction over the last, you know, 13 years to really increase 50% in order to, to build facilities. That's a lot of different things, whether it's the cost of the actual materials, cost of mobilization, how the economy is, et cetera. At the same time, we've seen user fees to participate in facilities grow at only 25%. And so there's a gap that's making it operationally harder and harder to justify these types of facilities in the traditional way they were funded. And so to close that gap, there's been the need for public-private partnerships to really serve in three, three main ways to, to make a project potentially more feasible. One is to impact, impact the capital stack formation or the cost of capital, depending on who's involved. Second is to generate more revenue and control expenses, again, depending on the partnership. And third is to expand the success metrics or redefine impact or the purpose of why these facilities are built. Not just for bottom line profitability, but why else, what other impacts, whether their economic impact or social do these facilities have that make them make sense for different locations? And so here's some examples of funding. I'll draw your eyes to the first two. And it's really meant to describe how funding mechanisms have become more creative as we move forward. It used to be that a public entity would have a municipal bond and build a facility, and private equity, from a private side, you would either raise money from investors or get traditional lending and develop a facility. Now it's becoming harder and harder to do that because of the construct costs of construction as well as the reduced budgets. And so we've seen a lot of different ways that these are funded outside of your traditional. And so here's some examples, whether it's local, state, and federal incentives. We see some states have specific grants that go towards local tourism projects that bring people in from out of state, and they'll provide funding, whether it's capital or operational. Dedicated sales and use taxes, that could be a variety of things, whether it's creating districts like a TIF district or a community improvement district. A lot of different opportunities to create incentives for developers in order to gain off of the travel within and for municipalities to create successful projects that serve the community and generate impact. We've got, you know, local sports and wellness organizations partnering with your local community for people who need facilities but don't have the means to develop them, get them involved early to create successful projects. Medical sector partners is probably the biggest trend we see in our industry. We don't have a project right now in development that's moving forward that doesn't have a partnership from the medical sector, whether that's simply a lease agreement with an orthopedic surgeon or rehab that wants to be on the front lines, or it's a hospital system actually investing in these projects. And that's really being driven by the need, and they're being judged on how they're impacting the community for things like obesity and drug problems, et cetera. And so these facilities are an outlet to be able to prove that they're making an impact. And it's also competitive between hospital systems and being involved in what's happening in the region. So we see that as a big portion, and then also schools, university partnerships. There's a lot of different ways that other funding mechanisms could come into play and do come into play for these facilities. So I'll give you some more facility examples, and then I'll open it up for questions. So Rocky Top Sports World is a, is example. You'll see a list on the, pictures on the left, list on the right of different types of partnership. Highlighted in blue are the ones that factored into that facility. So Rocky Top is a school and university partnership. As I mentioned, it's onsite on a, on a, on school land. That allowed this facility to be built smaller than what the region said it should have been. It's a six court facility. They need eight courts to meet the regional demand to be right sized. The school on that property has an existing two courts in their facility. And so this facility is able to be developed smaller, leverage that existing facility, and reduce construction costs. So that's a way that partnership impacted in a huge way. There's dedicated sales use taxes, there's hotel tax dollars that went towards funding this facility and go towards operations for things like marketing, et cetera. And it's privately managed. So these will go from heavily publicly involved and limited private to heavily private and limited public. This is all public dollars and then privately managed. Myrtle Beach is a little bit similar in terms of public and private. School and university partnerships, they have, we have partnerships with local community colleges for internships and work programs. So we are reducing our cost of labor by partnership partnering, but also expanding curriculums in the community. Regional sports organizations and rights holders were involved before this was even open in order to guarantee revenue and create more funding opportunities. Again, dedicated sales tax, hotel taxes involved in marketing and was, actually it's not, it wasn't involved in funding. So there was a state incentive that was involved in funding this facility in order to create more convention space. So instead of it being traditional convention space, they built a sports facility that could serve that flexible purpose and expand what they do from tourism perspective. Rocky Mount Event Center, again, this one more on the public side, but now we're starting into private investment. There's a medical sector partner here. They have specific facilities within our overall facilities that serve medical purposes, give back to the community. They invest the dollars upfront, and then a lot of the other ways that I was describing those other pieces, I don't want to reiterate that. But that's where the private investment came in, again, private management. So then to flip the script a little bit, this is now Cedar Fair's facility up in Sandusky, Ohio. This is a private development that now leveraged public dollars. And so public, medical sector partner, they have a medical partner within this, both for upfront capital as well as ongoing operations. But then because of the economic impact, they receive dollars based on hotel tax and room nights booked in order to develop the facility and expand on sports tourism. And so it's using sports tourism dollars to generate, or using tourism dollars to generate more tourism dollars. Privately managed, and obviously there's private equity to, as part of that capital stack as well. And lastly, Upward Star Center in Spartanburg, South Carolina is mostly private. All of the upfront capital was private development, but they receive incentives back on hotel rooms that were booked and impact in the community to fund their marketing arms and their, that goes out and generates those tournaments and that tournament play. Medical sector partner, again, you hear the same trends of why and who is getting involved in these facilities. And so just to bring it back to our main point and why we've done this, again, is that those definitions of success. And so I won't repeat them, but the focus here is sports tourism generating new visitation that would not be in the community but for tournaments, events within the facility, expanding the brand, but at the same time, that creates local access. And so one of the things that may be a comment is, well, there's a lot of other things that we may need here, like an indoor turf field. The reason why that's not in here is because indoor turf is, in our industry, not a driver of economic impact based on the inventory of fields that you need in order to do those types of events. And so that may be a need in the local community, but we focused on, based on the definition of success, the assets that will drive economic impact. And so, but then they will also have overlap in creating access to communities. And then lastly, needs to be operationally self-sustaining, and that's why we've right-sized these facilities to the market, both regionally and locally. So that's most of it. That was a lot of talking, a lot of information. Want to open it up to any questions that you have, on any information you see there or any of the information that isn't included. Do you have any questions?
So is our community viable for a sports complex without a joint partnership between all entities like the school district, the park district, the county, the city, the medical facilities? If we don't put those kind of packages together, how do we put this together?
Yeah. From our perspective, you know, where we are today, we can't tell you if it's feasible or not, right? If you put it together, that would be what we recommend studying as next steps. But the facilities that we see moving forward have as many of those partners involved in them as possible. And so you're becoming more likely feasible if those partnerships are put together. Does that make sense?
It does. And, and obviously Memorial Medical Center has taken it upon themselves to help develop the YMCA's. They, they built one out on the west side of town. They're getting ready to build one over Ward Five right now.
Yeah.
They did that as a separate entity. That's the private money that they came in. I don't know how much, they may have got some incentives from, from us, I think, for maybe some of the construction cost.
Sure.
But that was one part. Putting all those entities together sometimes is a tough deal.
Absolutely.
Real tough deal, because some of us don't talk to each other.
Yeah.
And you know, that's just, it's unfortunate, but those are the kind of things that we have to put together. And then the private side of the, of the, of the situation, you know, there's got to be something, there's got to be a level of what kind of, what kind of private money has to be brought into this whole thing. And, you know, if you don't have private money, you're wasting your time, right?
Yeah, and you, you saw examples of facilities that don't have private money, but that was the decision of that community to invest those dollars because they were available. So depending on what's available, there's, has to be something to bridge the gap if there is a gap.
Okay. Alderman Turner?
So, thank you for the presentation.
Yeah.
And one of the... But one of the things that struck me from the very beginning is when you listed out the local service providers.
Yeah.
There were only two listed that are currently available in Springfield that are located either in the east, north, or near south section of the city, which means that there is a serious void when you talk about opportunities for recreation and entertainment in, in Springfield. And those, one of them is a baseball field, which you would have to have an organized effort in order to do that, and the other is a bowling alley. And, and I appreciate Alderman Redpass's mention of the YMCA's, but keep in mind, those are basically closed facilities because you have to have a membership. You have to have a membership in order to participate. So I think that we can all agree that one of the things that came out of this study is that it definitely demonstrates that there is a significant void in a, in specific sections of Springfield for inner facilities.
Yeah, absolutely. And that's, you know, part of that access, right? And these facilities are developed for the reasons to generate economic impact, right? But part of it is now you have, or you would have if, if you move forward development, a world-class facility that this community probably couldn't have or support but for the goal of sports tourism. And so creating that access will be key if you move forward with any type of partnership is, this facility isn't meant to be, based on the definition of success for the city, exclusionary, right? It needs to be accessible for those folks who can afford to pay for leagues and camps of clinics and those that can't, right? And so there's different programs. We do some programs called SFM Access Program in facilities we manage where we use sponsorship dollars to subsidize scholarship for folks who may not be able to pay and things like that. So those things will be important as partnerships in, and how this, if you move forward with trying to figure out how this could work, making sure it's core to definition of success is that it has to be accessible, right? Because there is a need for those things.
Exactly.
Yeah.
Alderman Simpson?
I think you answered some of my questions. I, like Alderman Turner, have some concerns with regard to various sectors of the city. The Boys and Girls, we, we, there is a void, no question, with regard to sports facilities in our communities, but there are groups that desperately need someplace. And how, like the Boys and Girls Club, other entities, how would they factor into participating in this?
Yeah, that's to be determined, right? I mean, at this step, we're defining what that, that need is, but obviously they offer programming currently at their facilities. This would be new facilities that could be programmed, could create access. So there's different ways. There's also the example I gave about Rocky Top where those facilities are utilized for events so that we, you know, potentially are building a smaller facility, less capital, but leveraging the existing assets if they meet the quality for tournament standards. So there's different ways they could be involved. It's tough to say at this time because we don't know specifically what the feasibility is operationally or impact wise. But they could be involved in terms of hosting events at their facility or doing programming, taking their kids to this facility for different things.
Alderman Henauer?
Yeah, thank you. I have a son that's playing baseball, and he goes to the basketball, and we're, it seems like we're all over the place. Just this past weekend, we were in Jacksonville, Illinois at Lynn's Field, and they had tons of teams over there, all through from eight years old, under eight, and all the way to 16. They had an under 16 team. And the, the interesting thing about it is, and I mean, they were full all weekend. And you're right, it does bring in money, but the place is for sale. And this is what bothers me. Spartan Park, it's, it's in Chatham, it's just right out on, right on the edge of town. It's for sale. And, and they have a lot of tournaments and, and all that. The last I heard, it was for sale. You know, my concern is, and I'm a big sports guy, trust me, I, I'm, I, I, but my concern is, is, you know, if these places, and they were privately funded, if, if, if they can't make it, you know, what, what makes, you know, we spend $60 million, and all of a sudden, if these places can't make it, what makes this for sure, a for sure?
Yeah, and it's a, it's a warranted concern. Really, it's the reality of how these facilities operate and the reason why there's partnership needed, right? It's because, as I mentioned earlier, in order to have facilities of this scale, they have to be overbuilt for the market opportunity. So from a private, traditional private investment, if you're just looking at the operation, if you're overbuilt, the, you know, you don't have the revenues to cover your costs, to cover the cost of capital, and they don't necessarily make sense or pencil out from a traditional investment standpoint. And that's why there has to be partnership for the entities that are getting benefit from economic impact or benefit... from economic impact or benefit from social impact or medical impact as well as the private sector. If you looked at just sports tourism facilities like Rocky Top, there's, there, no private entity would ever invest in that facility because it's not set up to generate bottom-line profitability. It's set up to drive heads and beds, which is tax revenue for the, the county and the city, and then obviously benefits the, the businesses. What private money is interested in these types of facilities is capitalizing on that visitation, right? And so we see that Cedar Fair example, the reason why Cedar Fair is the operator of amusement parks across the country, the reason why they invested their money is to drive visitation to their, their park. So they know that that facility, bottom line, isn't going to generate a return on investment that justifies their investment specifically in the facility, but then they know that they can sell tickets to their amusement park, to their hotel, et cetera. And so obviously you may not have that specific partner, but the reason public's, you know, private investment could make sense is those incentives that are benefiting from the travel. So you're absolutely right, as a standalone sports tourism private investment, there's a lot of examples of how these facilities haven't worked, and that's why it's so important that the right entities are at the table that benefit in the right way to potentially create a project that could work with a partnership. Does that make sense?
Thank you. Alderman Turner?
I, I think that the key to having a, having a successful project is that it has to be multipurpose. The projects, the facilities that Alderman Henauer referenced are very specific to baseball or softball. So you have to have something that is going to be a draw for a multitude of different activities for all different age groups and that's year-round, 24 hours a day type of thing, and not just something that's, you know, baseball for the summertime or, or for a specific age group. So I think that's, that's the real key. You know, and I can see, I think, you know, we have to not just look at the dollar figure, but look at the potential for the impact that it would have on the city. So you, you think about places like the Boys and Girls Club or, or the Senior Center and all these other small entities that are always cash-strapped, they're always trying to get money to do upgrades. The Boys and Girls Club was benefited from, money from the Capitol bill because they needed basic things like a new windows, new roof. So if you look at all of those entities and you have a facility where all of those programs can be housed under one roof, then that's a benefit to all of those small organizations as well as the, the community. So I think that's the way you have to look at it.
Alderman Simpson?
So once you take care of, of those local issues, how, what kind of marketing strategy do you use to even get other groups to want to come to Springfield?
Yeah, it's a great question. So it, a lot of times starts with the Convention Visitors Bureau or the Destination Marketing Organization, but also in the, all the facilities that we run, we have dedicated marketing resources in-house to the facility so that are on payroll at the facility. We're leveraging those who are already marketing your community, right? Like Visit Springfield in this example. And going out, using relationships that, you know, in our case, that we have with tournament organizers across the country and in this region, but there's also things like trade shows. And so there's trade shows like the National Association of Sports Commissions, which actually just got its name changed to Sport Event and Facilities Conference, but it's where municipalities and facilities go to talk to tournaments' rights, right holders and negotiate bringing events in. And so within facilities, we have specific marketing budgets and specific dollars placed for tournament business development, specific resources to do that, as well as leveraging the organizations that are, exist to promote destinations.
And we, and we already have a number of different sports teams outside of the School District 186 sports teams that travel all over the country because they don't have facilities in Springfield in order to bring those groups here. And I mean, I've, I have kids and grandkids that play a multitude of different sports, and we've been all over the United States because we have to travel to do that. And there are already smaller tournaments and things that come here. As a matter of fact, there was, Sean Gregory had one, and he had to actually cobble together three different locations.
Yeah.
Because there wasn't one facility large enough to host that. So I mean, you know, the potential is there. We just have to figure out if we want to do it and if we have the wherewithal to, to piece it, to piece it together. And, and I believe the partnerships are there. If you don't look at, you know, just being targeted to one, one group and, you know, one sport, look at how all of these different entities can come together under one roof.
Alderman Donlin?
What's our next steps?
Yeah, so our recommended next step would be to go to that phase two step to analyze what operations could look like and develop a recommended phase plan, right? So as I mentioned before, we're not recommending a $60 million facility, but that's the amount of all the different assets that we believe should be analyzed. And then the plan to put together would be, what's the right next step to get the best bang for your buck essentially, right? If you were to spend dollars or tourism dollars or private dollars or whatever, what would be the best return on those from a facility's perspective? And so we would recommend going forward with that feasibility analysis so that the facility can be right-sized, the operation can be optimized, and the right business model can be determined. Whether that, you know, it's up to, you all determine how that happens, whether it's through city funds or whether it's through partnership with the private sector to get that facility analysis done. But that's what we recommend as a next step because right now, this is really initial to say, here's what the opportunity is, but we need to define what are the realities of that opportunity. And so we would, we tell the truth. We get hired as much because we say no as because we say feasibility yes. So if this results that this facility isn't going to be operationally sustainable, we'll tell you that. And so you know, okay, we have this bogey operationally, we need to either say, okay, it's not going to make sense for us, or create a partnership that covers that or makes that less or whatever needs to happen. And so defining those numbers, what the right capital is, what the right operation is, is important to knowing what your next steps might be. And then, yeah, go ahead.
I guess my follow-up question, and maybe it's to you and maybe it's to Scott, is who's the driver of that next step? How do we get that accomplished?
Yeah, go ahead, Scott.
Yeah, thanks, Dan and Alderman. So, you know, our idea has been to provide this initial market analysis through SFA and then to put that out in some kind of RFP and allow developers say, okay, this is what we believe we need. Now put this into your project and then come to us and we'll, we'll decide on the phase two. But now insert this into your project or create that project for you. We'll put out the RFP, let the developers then take the lead at that point. I know that Dan had some other ideas, and so we're working through that, but that was our initial idea is that we would somewhat take a step back and then we would allow the developers to come through or allow least them to know what the project's scope would be at that time. That's, that's our idea at this point.
Thank you. Any other questions or discussion? Well, we appreciate you coming.
Yeah, thanks, everyone. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Chair'll entertain a motion to dispense with the reading of the minutes of the June 4, 2019 Special City Council Meeting and approve the minutes.
Second.
Moved in second. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Chair'll entertain a motion to dispense with the reading of the minutes of the June 4, 2019 Regular City Council Meeting and approve the minutes.
So moved. Second.
Moved in second. Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Chair'll entertain a motion to incorporate the pre-council first reading of ordinances in the record of this city council meeting.
So moved.
Been moved in second. Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. Chair'll entertain a motion to incorporate the pre-council reading of the consent agenda in the record of this city council meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Been moved in second. Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Chair'll entertain a motion to place the consent agenda on final passage.
So moved. Second.
Been moved in second. Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, vote yes. Those opposed, vote no. The voting is now open. And the consent agenda passes 10 voting yes, none voting no. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is number 2019-272, ordinance accepting proposal number CS20-02 with JP Morgan Chase Bank from municipal lease purchase financing for vehicles and equipment and the principal amount not to exceed $4,400,000 for the Office of Budget Management. Chair'll entertain a motion to place agenda number 2019-272 on final passage.
So moved.
Been moved in second. Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, vote yes. Those opposed, vote no. The voting is now open.
Aye.
And the ordinance passes 10 voting yes, none voting no. Next item on the agenda is number 2019-277, an ordinance approving the reappointment of Helen Cox to the Lincoln Library Board of Trustees. Chair'll entertain a motion to place agenda number 2019-277 on final passage.
So moved.
Been moved in second. Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, vote yes. Those opposed, vote no. The voting is now open.
Aye.
And the motion passes or ordinance passes 10 voting yes, none voting no. Next item on the agenda is 2019-282, an ordinance authorizing payment of $15,000 to Lincoln Land Charity Championship for regional and local marketing and promotion of the PGA Tour Golf in Springfield from June 10, 2019 through June 16, 2019 as amended. Chair'll entertain a motion to place agenda number 2019-282 on a final passage.
So moved.
Second.
Been moved in second. Any discussion? Alderman Henauer?
Thank you, Mayor. I've had quite a few people that reached out to me. We, I know we've, we've said we're taking 15 out of SCBB. I'd like to request, we, we've got in our budget from, from the corporate budget, 15 grand. I, I would like to make an amendment to take 15,000 out of the corporate for this as well. You know, the fiscal impact on this was, you know, as, as Kate and Kate's here, I'm not going to steal her thunder, but you know, it's, it's roughly five, five to six million dollars according to their figures. Even if you take that in half and say it's two and a half to three, that's still a pretty good impact and it's, it's a pretty good return on our investment. And for that, I, I make the motion that we amend to take 15 out of corporate. And it was already in the budget that we passed.
Is there a second?
Second.
Been moved in second to amend by adding 15,000 from the corporate fund. Any discussion? Alderman Turner?
I have a question. What, what do you mean it's already in the budget that we passed for, for this project?
No, and when we passed a budget in, remember, the last meeting I had mentioned that I knew I saw it somewhere in our budget that we had added 15,000 for. Director McCarty pointed out that it was in the corporate side under contracts or something.
Gen City there.
Yeah, and, and, and that's where it would come from.
But I thought he said that when, and I'm just trying to get some clarification.
Right.
I thought he said that when he penciled that in, it was just a pencil in because we had done that last year. It wasn't necessarily meant to be a line item. So was it meant to be a line item or was it meant to be a pencil in?
It's actually part of a larger appropriation. We have several things in that one line item. This 15,000 was one of them because we had done 15,000 out of corporate two out of three years, so it was put in with this in mind, with the assumption that it would be done again. There's other things in there, other grants like our First Night and I think the Symphony and maybe there's something else I'm forgetting off the top of my head. So it's a variety of things that we've been doing for a number of years, and because we had done that two out of three years, that was placed in there. I did have this discussion with the budget manager, Julie, after that meeting last week, and she confirmed that.
And it was put in there because there was an assumption that we would do it again?
That is correct.
So, so are all the other, I'm sorry. So I mean, I remember last year, we, we also did, we did a grant for Juneteenth, we did a grant to the Sliders and a couple of others. So were all of those placed in as assumptions as well?
That was all part of the lump sum that was put in SCBB's budget. I think it's 75,000 maybe.
So how, how did you make, how did you differentiate between those things that were put in as assumptions and those things that were put in the lump, the lump sum?
Because...
I'm confused.
Because the only things that we put in a corporate were ones that we had already approved by the council to have been done. So those ones you're talking about were out of SCBB's budget, and they were all part of the overall lump sum. The ones that were specifically mentioned have been done out of corporate multiple years, and this golf tournament was one of them. It doesn't mean the council has to approve it, but we went ahead and put it in there under the assumption that the council would look at it. So it's in there.
So...
But it can be used for whatever the council chooses.
So, so it's not necessarily, so see, I'm still confused because on the one hand, and I, and I'm really not trying to be argumentative, I'm just trying to understand. So, so the Juneteenth, so the Juneteenth and the Sliders and all of those other things that we've, that we did last year in addition to we did the web.com at the same time, those are all different from the web.com.
I'll give you an example. The web.com, all of it came out of SCBB last year, but the two previous years, it had been half and half, 15 and 15. So if you look at the budget, and this is what the Alderman was talking about, the only place where that was put in the notes off to the side, those notes pages that we gave you, was out of corporate. You won't see that in SCBB because all of the things that we had done, it's just one lump sum that went in there. We didn't take in line item, everything that was in there.
I think we, I think last year we did half and half.
Guess I have to pay more attention to the notes next time.
I think last year, we did half and half as well.
I think last year was actually all out of SCBB. We looked at that. It was the two previous years that was half and half.
I thought it was half and half, and that's, that's why it was still in there. That was my assumption.
Yeah.
Okay, any other discussion on the amendment?
I, I just would like to add real quick, and obviously this is my first time up here doing this, but I, I did take the opportunity to go visit the, the golf tournament. Kate was very kind to show me around. Full disclosure, Alderman Simpson, I, I do not have your level of expertise when it comes to golf. This was, this was, it's, it's not my sport. I, I hit my foot. But even with the weather that we had this weekend, you could see people, people were still coming out. It was a, it's a really well-run production, and I was very impressed with, with the level of interest. I, I, I mean, I can read, I see these things that golf is becoming a, is a big sport and that lots of people are attracted to it. So I, I think it's important that we, you know, to generate this hot, this hotel tax so that we can be supporting events that just impact our local community, like our Juneteenth and, and some of our other, you know, smaller summer festivals that are really dedicated to, more to our residents. I think it's important that we also support events that are pulling people in and are staying in our hotels and therefore generating more tax dollars for us.
Alderman Simpson?
Alderman Connelly, we're going to have to go out because we've got excellent golf courses.
You're going to have to be patient with me, ma'am.
I want to see a video of that.
As a matter of fact, we do, the Springfield Golf Club does a mentoring program. It's mostly for youth, but we have adults too. And it's out at Lincoln Green, so...
Okay, good.
You can, you can come. Because not only is, is golf mentally stimulating, it is also a game that I believe more youth need to be involved in, and adults, but specifically youth in, in the community to give them other accesses. So, yeah, anytime you're ready. And, and I'll teach you not to hit your foot.
We'll talk, but Ralph can't come in much.
I, I will just say, I, I find it mentally frustrating, not mentally stimulating when I play golf, so...
Any other discussion on the amendment?
Real quick, Kate, could you want to give us a quick reprise of how, I know it's short notice, but how the, how the weekend went? I, I mean, I think it's, given the, the, the weather and, and all the pitfalls that you had to deal with, could you just give us a brief overview?
Well, we had a winner on Sunday. Zhen Chenfong, I can't pronounce his name. It's, it's, but we had a great tournament. It was, it was, we had plenty of volunteers. We, we certainly had our weather challenges when, when you were out. We, it, it was, it was tough. But, you know, before I came down, I did an analysis very quickly. We haven't had the time to, to dig... We haven't had the time to dig into the spreadsheets. We're still in the process of moving off the golf course. But since we're talking about heads and beds, you know, a full-field golf tournament is 156 players and those came to us from across the globe, literally, with our winter coming to us from China. So 156 players, when I really quickly ran through the numbers before I left the office today, we had 111 of those players in hotels. We had 156 caddies. Of those, it looked to me like there were about 130 who were coming in from out of town. So we had about 26 that were locals. They stayed at hotels all across the city. And so I am here asking you for support, not only for the event, but for local businesses. These hotels that they're staying, they're staying in, they're all over the city. We did a survey, 57 players self-identified that they were bringing guests in, and 43 of those were staying in hotels like the Route 66, the State House, the Microtel, the Super 8, the Motel 6, it's the Crown Plaza, it's all over the city. And they're filling restaurants. And so that's, you know, it was a great event. It was exhausting, but we pulled it off and Panther Creek did a fantastic job. And the players and the tour love coming to Springfield because we treat them like family here. And so they're looking forward to coming back in 2020.
Any other discussion or questions? Alderman McMenamin.
I think it's a great tournament and congratulations on another successful tournament. I think we have to be careful about, again, subsidizing one group as opposed to another group. I think the American Legion is here next weekend. They'll bring in, I think, maybe 1,000 rooms for Springfield for several nights. But, you know, they're not asking for a subsidy or any of the other organizations that come into town. And so I was in favor of giving some money to the Pro-Am to get it off the ground, and I'm even okay for the 15,000. But I just have a problem with perpetual subsidies because we're going to get any number of requests or others will come and say, well, you gave it to them, we want some too. So I think we had a broad-based community group that made a recommendation to the council. It was their first time making a recommendation for a grant and their recommendation was 15,000. And I think it's important for us to respect that grassroots, I think it's a 15-member body that made that recommendation to us. And if we're going to ignore them, I think we're setting a bad precedent because why have a grassroots organization giving us advice if we're not going to follow it or, you know, just dip into another pocket of money to support this? So I wish I hadn't had to say this, but I wasn't expecting an amendment to come out tonight because we discussed this a week ago and I thought we had it finalized and now we've got another discussion. So I guess the other point of view has to be expressed.
I guess if you'd speak to the importance of sponsorships, and I think this event runs through 2020, is that correct? And what do they look for? And if you can differentiate between a convention and your particular event, that might be helpful.
Well, obviously, we can't run it, we can't do what we do without support. And so I respect your opinion, Alderman McMenamin, but I also would tell you that I believe that this tournament has a home here for a long time, but I also believe it's going to take some investment from the city to help make it happen. That's why I continue to come down here every year and give you a report. I provide you with the data. Very involved in the American Legion as well. So 1,000 roommates is fantastic. We generate, I believe our 2018 was 2003 room nights. And so I'm not comparing apples to oranges, but not only are we generating room nights and filling restaurants and driving business to other entities, we're putting Springfield, Illinois on the map. As I said when I was here last week, there are only 24 web.com tour events on the regular schedule and only 19 of those are domestic events. And we receive a ton of coverage, although we are not televised. My hope is that one day we will be. We will have a title sponsor in some fashion. Our contracts do go through 2020 with the PGA Tour, with Panther Creek Country Club, and also with Levi Ray and Shaw, without whom we could not do this tournament. But it takes more than that. We had a very long time tie to the LPGA Tour for 36 years. And I think people forget, you know, when that tournament went away in 2011, that tournament had 36 years to build, to build an identity. For 31 years, it had a consistent date. It was always Labor Day weekend. We had 1,200 volunteers. We're building, we're still in our infancy, we're still building our identity. And so your support is critical to what we do. I'm sorry that you think of it as a subsidy, but I think it's an investment in a pretty solid return. As you said, it's 5.8 million dollars. I've given you those numbers. I feel very confident in those numbers and I would, it's meaningful, so.
Alderman Simpson.
So in the past, have you provided an accounting of the 30,000? And I know the 15,000 is after the fact. Will you provide an accounting for 15,000?
Absolutely. Yeah, we're still, you know, the tournament just ended Sunday and so we're still in the process of getting off the golf course, but we have a ton of data. And I have come here every year with data and have been asked for more and more data and I take that very seriously. Absolutely, I'll provide an accounting.
Alderman Proctor.
I guess my question is, how crucial is the additional 15,000 now that the event's done, everything? Other than showing declining support from the city, what does it do to the tournament if you don't get the additional 15,000?
Well, I mean, I made no secret last week when I was here that our sponsorships are down. I mean, we have, we had a number of new people come into our fold, but we lost. Our attrition was around 93,000, I believe. And so right now, we still have bills to cover and we were hit with some pretty horrible weather on Saturday. We had, I think, the longest weather delay on any tour was, happened to us on Saturday. And so we lost a pretty significant gate. So what will it do? I mean, it causes us to take a look at that when our company looks at, you know, how can we keep this thing going? We had some increases. Businesses who have historically donated services to the tournament or provided them at a significant discount are, you know, rightfully so, expecting those payments to go up. And so if we can't meet those, you know, it's a discussion we'll have to have at our company.
So when you have, so you have a gap now. Does that gap just carry over the next year, the next tournament?
More than likely, yeah. Haven't experienced that yet, Alderman Proctor. This will be a first time for that, for me.
All right, thanks.
Yeah, Scott, if you'd like to come up.
Yeah, I just want to clarify that when we provide convention subsidies, we know the history of those conventions and it's a much cleaner process because we can either look at their history here in town, we can look at their history in other cities, and we know exactly how many room nights they're bringing in. So we know exactly how to subsidize those conventions if they ask for it. American Legion, we provide some services, so we provide some service subsidies, but not necessarily monetary subsidies at that point. But other groups ask for those subsidies, but we go up to what they create in the local hotel tax. So we take that 7% that they create in the local hotel tax and we won't go above that. So that's generally what the subsidies. When we get to events, and I think Kate has a high caliber event for sure, it gets a little harder to justify exactly what that impact is or how many hotel rooms are being generated and what the hotel tax is to be based on. So I think that's the issue we have with the local grants. I think the advisory board did a very good job as far as justifying the 15,000 and what the hotel tax is. But on the other end, and Kate and I have had many conversations, I think her event is very high-level. I think it certainly makes an impact in Springfield. I think she unfairly gets pegged or compared against other events, which I believe that she has more to impact than maybe some of the other events that we have. So even though I think the board is certainly right on as far as their assessment of the 15,000, I certainly think her event is very impactful in Springfield.
Thank you.
Did you explain that to the board when they met and decided to cut back the 30 to the 15?
I absolutely did, yeah. And so, and that's part of the board's decision at that point is how we go about formalizing our subsidies for conventions as well. And what they believed based on some figures that the SHLA provided and then other comments. And then also, as well as the city has supported the tournament to $90,000 over the past three years. And so that was another thing to Alderman McMenamin's point, that we have provided that subsidy. We do want them to be able to stand alone. I know Kate wants that as well. She would love to be able to stand alone as well. So the board took all that in consideration when they reduced the amount to 50%. But that was a vote of confidence. I mean, that was a vote for the tournament, even though they reduced it by 50%. I think that the extra 15 coming out of the corporate certainly for this event is appropriate.
Yeah, I think with regards to that, one of the things that concerned the group was the 75,000 budgeted through Convention Visitors Bureau. And they viewed it as 30,000 almost half, and I think that's why, another major reason they reduced it.
I just think that, and please don't take my comments as I don't support the tournament because I do. I think it's a great opportunity for Springfield. However, we took a lot of pains and went through a lot of back and forth, you and I went through a lot of back and forth. To put that tourism advisory group together. And this is the very first opportunity for them to weigh in on a project. So with the very first opportunity that they have to weigh in on a project, if we're going to discount and disrespect their work, then why are we even going through this, why go through this exercise?
And I appreciate, and I agree with you on that, that, you know, they, they cut it back and the mayor said it, they cut it back because of the amount that they had budgeted for this year. But this extra 15 is coming out of the corporate, not through SCBB, so.
So are we going to do this for every, is this, are we setting a precedent then? So if I.
Well, I don't know that the precedent wasn't already set years ago when we split it in half.
This is the exact first time that we've had this tourism advisory board that has been in effect. So I'm just saying, don't, I want everyone to be prepared so that when Alderman.
Proctor.
Proctor. I don't even know what's his name. Alderman, Alderman Proctor brings forward something for the Sliders and the Tourism Board says, no, we want to cut it in half. And then Alderman Proctor says, well, I think it's worthy, so I want to take money from someplace else. I don't want anybody to say, no, 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 we got the Tourism Board going. I'm just saying we're setting a dangerous precedent.
I think the difference here is that this was grandfathered in from previous years to the corporate fund because it's initially, the first year was taking 15 out of the CBB, 15 out of the corporate fund. I don't believe that was last year, but it was grandfathered in and maybe that's the difference in the two. And so maybe next year, maybe next year you don't budget for the, in the corporate fund.
Who knew we were doing it this year?
Alderman Rep. Path.
I understand your sentiment on that, Alderman, but I can just tell you that we can't judge these things as a group. These, all these events are different. I do not support the Sliders investment, no offense of my colleague, but it's a for-profit entity. And this is the only presentation I remember of somebody coming back and telling us how it went. We have it in our ordinance that everybody's supposed to come back and give a report. They don't ever come.
It just started. This is the first year that that ordinance is in effect.
If they don't come, I'm not voting for this stuff. I'm not voting for the Sliders because it's different because it's a for-profit entity and I won't vote for it.
Alderman Proctor.
Just really quick on that, he did come back and present and he showed what the money was used for. And actually, I don't want to quote you, but I think he actually said that that was money well-spent.
Well, guess what? Mark it up on the board right now. It's not going, I'm not voting for it.
Money not well-spent.
Do we have to give a list of what we're not going to vote for?
No, that's a sore subject, Don.
Any other discussion on the amendment?
I'm going to vote we disband the tourism advisory. That's what I'm voting on.
Any other discussion on the amendment? So the amendment is 15,000 from the corporate fund. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Vote, say nay.
No.
Motion passes. So is there a motion on the agenda item as amended?
Don't move.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion as amended, vote yes, those opposed vote no. The voting is now open.
Aye.
The ordinance passes as amended, seven voting yes, none, or three voting no. Is there any unfinished business coming before the council?
Yeah, can we get Alderman Simpson a new computer?
Yep. Need to put that in the budget.
Aye.
Is it penciled in or is it in there for real?
It's got to be in there for real.
I'll find the money, Alderman. Alderman, I'll find the money.
Any other unfinished business? Just a reminder, on Thursday, the Levitt Concert Series continues. I think someone's here to talk about that later on, but that's at 6 o'clock on Thursdays. Is there any new business coming before the council? One thing I'd like to announce is Dyle Stokes, the Assistant Chief of the Police Department, his last day was today. He's retired after 21 years of service. So we appreciate all his good work for the city of Springfield.
Yes, we do.
With regards to individuals that signed up to address the council, Greg Zoll, is Greg here? Greg Zoll. Donald Martin.
Mayor, while he's walking up, can I say something very quickly?
Yes, please.
I just, Alderman Hannah reminded me, I didn't think of this myself, but I just wanted to, on behalf of the council and everybody in the room, want to congratulate Jeanette Bland on becoming a grandparent again.
Yes, go ahead.
Hello, I'm Donald Martin, 904 Westview Drive. I just had a few things that I wanted to address considering with the trash idea and was wondering if we had a street cleaner that ever cleaned the main arteries as Madison and Jefferson and things of this nature. Dollar General is, I don't see where, I don't know what exactly that pertains to, but there's a lot of strip malls around town who, trash cans are full and overflowing. I run avidly every day through Washington Park. I'm continuously picking up state journal registers banning materials from their newspapers everywhere. The trash ideas, we all need to be a little bit more conscious about what we're doing with that idea. Another thing that I was driving around noticing, I'm not sure about these business licenses anymore. Do we still have to have business licenses in the city of Springfield?
Mm-hmm.
Yes?
Yes.
Is there a reason why? I mean, I know we can't control anybody who gets a business license, but just in a short radius around the southwest part of Springfield, we have 25 nail salons and I don't know how many massage parlors. I don't know if anybody else has noticed any of this, but if it's our, I was also in the cosmetology school to get a haircut. I don't see any of those people getting education for tech bee technicians.
They're licensed through the state.
Exactly. I understand there, my mom was a cosmetologist.
I've been in every one of those 25 nail salons.
Every one of them? How about the other three quadrants of the city?
Promise.
I was just curious to see how many of the, it's bothersome to me that we only have only a town of 117,000 people to have 25 nail salons in one area. We have two nail salons in the mall alone that, I mean, we're, anyway.
Man is high.
And I agree with Conley about the tax on cannabis. Why don't we have a cannabis tax on alcohol?
We do.
We do.
Do we, on packaged liquor?
Sales tax.
Because I, did it just start? Because at an Icon meeting, I was notified that we don't have a sales tax on, you were, DeCenzo was at that meeting. And as far as the drug testing is, they're supposed to be relating this to alcohol. I have a medicinal cannabis license. I don't even use it anymore because it's not beneficial for my particular problem. But in the same respect, people are getting suspended from their jobs. Do they get tested for alcohol? Do they get tested for alcohol?
Yes.
They do get tested for, and they are subject, subject, I mean, but for somebody who knows the side effects of cannabis, if I medicated a week ago, it's still in my system. Even with a license, they're at least subject to suspension. And, or even if it turns recreational at the beginning of the year, they still gonna, are they gonna be considered overlooking the THC aspect of cannabis?
Yeah, that remains to be seen. Fortunately, it's against federal law, so, you know, we have law enforcement that enforce those laws. And so that's what, but HR is going to handle that, Jim Cusin, with regards to that. So that, that doesn't come up till January 1st, and we've started that process. I know for the federal government, they've already sent out a notification with regards to employees locally about you still are restricted from using it. So if you're tested and you test positive, there's going to be consequences. So that's something we'll have to address, and we're in the process of that.
Well, I'm glad you brought up the federally illegal part, because that was my next thing on the agenda, that are the, are these dispensaries and things, are they paying federal taxes? How can they possibly collect federal taxes on something that's illegal?
I don't think they are.
And are, are those, are those people withholding federal income tax from their employees? Because...
That's something you'd have to ask them.
Well, that's...
When you go to get your medicinal marijuana, ask them at the store.
I don't, I don't, I don't participate with that anymore. That's why I said, I, I went through the expense to get this medicinal license to help with a problem that I have, or had, actually. I'm overcoming this problem.
But I think that's what has to be all worked out.
I'm not even renewing the darn thing, because it does, doesn't benefit my situation.
There's a lot of...
Neither did the hundreds of pills that they wanted to prescribe me that doesn't work either, but in any respect. And I know I'm out of time, but my water bill, I was going to bring up as well, as far as we, we get billed for a five-unit water charge. Supposedly, you allow three units of water at 748 or 750 gallons of water per person. That's three units. I understand that my mom's the only one on the bill. So where does the five units come derived from? Is it, if you're allowing three units of water per person, wouldn't it, the small, the lesser amount of the $1.64 or whatever per unit of water, wouldn't it be three units or six units if there was two people, or nine units if it was three people living in that residence?
If you would give your name and address to Bonnie Drew, we can have someone call you about the bill and go over that.
Well, I'm, I'm gonna warn you right now, the bill's in my mother's name, so if there's any...
Okay, well, that's fine.
I can bring my mother down, and she can...
That will be a problem.
But that's all I have to say. And as far as the grass goes with Dollar General, Alderman Turner said something about, I actually went into the one on MacArthur, because I run past there and offered, or asked if they had somebody to mow the grass, because I was gonna offer to mow it.
Well, good. Nice. Appreciate that.
But thank you for your time.
Well, thanks for coming up. Next is Harrison Beeler, Sr. You'd state your name and address for the council, we'd appreciate it.
Harrison Beeler, Sr., Preset Committee Man, Ward 2, Republican Party. I don't know who are, are you or...
I am.
Okay. Congratulations.
Thank you.
For getting in there. As I say on my forum here, request, my home been broken into twice since April, and my garage just got broken into last week. There are drug houses on my street. Right there on 12th Street, there's a smoking house down the street from my house. I went and seen the ordinance on, these ordinance they have for pertaining to the houses and the stuff in the front yard are outdated. Grilling on the front yard, basketball court, you know, hanging in the front yard. I'm only trying to tell people how to live their life, okay? I haven't got cameras for my house now. I've been in the same house for over 35 years. And all of a sudden, my house getting broken into. Section 8, Special Housing Authority, I think they need to sit at the table and come up with some new kind of guidelines for people. And they need to be, start checking these people out, because we got early-release prisoners out of jail, just moved right into the neighborhood, also on this crime wave here. This has to be the worst it has been since I've been there in 35 years. I got kids next door to me with ankle bracelets on. I'm pretty sure one of them too probably broke up my house before in April. This has to stop. Then we got cars speeding down the street. We don't have any speed bump. We don't have any signs that say slow children playing. I live two blocks away from fighting, two blocks away, no sign whatsoever. Probably on the school block, I think there's a couple of signs at school, but nothing else there. Okay? I go over to all these little small town, they got signs on there that said, slow, drive like the children live here. You know, we need something like that there too here in Ward 2. There's enough is enough. We need to get maybe another sub-police station over there again for a faster response time. I don't know. These guys are talking about subsidies, money, all, you know, I don't care about money. It's not, I'm not here to talk about money, but I got cameras in my, why don't we invest some money into putting cameras on some of these homeowners' houses? Because I live in a neighborhood. It was a neighborhood when I was growing up there, everybody owned their house. Now we got all rental houses, or section 8, or public aid, or whatever the heck it is. You know, we don't have a neighborhood anymore. They took that away from us. Probably about a five-block radius, you only got maybe four or five homeowners. The rest is all rental. These sides just turned into a trash rental area. And they getting paid big money to rent out trashy houses to people on section 8, because there's a guaranteed paycheck for whoever owns their homes there. And they live in Chatham somewhere, or on the west side of Springfield. They don't have to worry about the crime wave. They don't have to worry about people sitting out in the front yard drinking beer and whiskey and throwing bottles in the street, or kids in the front street playing basketball. There should be another ordinance for that too. The basketball court should go in your driveway, not in the street. These things you have on the third floor, I mean, the floor I went and got these here, they're outdated. It's time to get with the time. People don't respect the law. They don't respect the neighborhood. They don't respect themselves. It's time for us to step up and change this stuff. You know, we have so many houses for, I don't know, the halfway houses, they pop up everywhere in Ward 2. We got more of them than we do people that own homes.
That's not true.
This is crazy. It's pretty bad over there. Our alley, my alley, Preset Committee Man, I have no voice or nothing, because all the Democrat running in Springfield again. My, I can't drive, I can't get to my garage, because the tree are sticking all through the alleys. Trash all through the alleys. Everywhere I go, there's trash on the street. Trash in front of houses. Broke-down cars everywhere. I don't live in New York. I don't live in LA. I don't live in Chicago. I live in Springfield. Why do my neighborhood look so bad? I paid my taxes to keep my neighborhood clean. Where are my tax dollars going? I didn't ask for no handicap walk. We don't have all these handicapped people over there. Everybody's walking. We got one lady in a wheelchair, and they tore all the street up, put handicap ramps in. What for? That was the money. That money could went to giving the homeowners cameras so they could keep an eye on their homes. I'm sitting here listening to you guys talk about golf, and I gotta look on my phone and see if my house getting robbed. It's a shame. I want action done in Ward 2.
That document you have, if you had showed to the clerks so we can make note of that, that he said it's outdated, that'd be helpful. And then also Deputy Chief Hanley's in the back there, so if you give him your address and, or the street, we can, make sure we can take measures to look into what you pointed out to us.
We need more homeowners instead of renters.
I spoke with, in, in response to your signing up to speak, I was out there today, and I spoke with police officer who actually took your report when you were broken into, and apparently they found the guy that did it.
Did he have ankle bracelet on?
I don't know.
I'm just asking.
I appreciate...
No, those teenagers, they quit school.
I appreciate your issues, I do. And I'm working with Public Works. I'm working with the Housing Authority in terms of section 8 homes. And you're, they will be addressed, because, yeah, it's the trash, the overgrown weeds, it's ridiculous in that area. And trust me, it, you'll see a difference.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, Alderman McMenamin.
I think the discussion regarding impaired driving, and we had a situation of 80 miles per hour on MacArthur Boulevard, and a collision that was horrific, where the engine actually dislodged from the vehicle. I think our primary responsibility is public safety. And so I agree with those that think we should put all our extra monies into public safety, and golf does not fit that priority. Public safety is extraordinarily important for our city, and we should let the private sector take care of other type of things like golf tournaments. And I don't want to have to say this, because I admire what our speaker was saying tonight about her efforts, but that, that's not a primary city responsibility. I think with this marijuana, permissive recreational marijuana is going to increase our problems in the city. And we can expect more impaired driving and lawlessness. And I think going down the road, all those extra dollars we can find, we should put into public safety, police substations, extra patrols, et cetera, et cetera. So I think it's going to be a growing sentiment within our city along those lines, and I, I think we all have to get in touch with it.
Alderman Turner?
I appreciate the fact, the, the fact that we have to deal with public safety, and I appreciate the fact that we have to be very cognizant of how we address the cleanup needs in our neighborhoods. I think that all neighborhoods have those, those same issues. However, I am really, I, it's growing weary on me for people to come here and just get up and talk for their five minutes and make blanket statements when there may or may not be any truth to those statements. And I'm also getting a little weary of people making blanket statements about the east side of Springfield. I have lived on the east side of Springfield in two locations for all of my adult life. I've raised my children and, and my grandchildren on the east side of Springfield. I live there because I want to. I could live anywhere in the city of Springfield, in any ward, any house. I choose to live on the east side of Springfield, and it is a neighborhood. It doesn't matter if it's rental property or homeowner property. It is a neighborhood, and everyone who lives in each one of those houses has value and contributes to that neighborhood and to, and to that neighborhood feel. So I don't think we can just make those blanket statements and discount someone because they are not a homeowner. There's a lot of different reasons why people choose or not choose to be homeowners. The second thing is, is that we also can't make blanket statements about who is committing crimes just because someone is a person who has been incarcerated and recently released back into society. We can't just assume that if a crime is committed, they're the perpetrator of that crime. That there's a, you know, there's due process, and we just can't do that. And also, in order to have halfway house in the city of Springfield, there's a zoning issue that has to be dealt with. So we know where every halfway house is in the city of Springfield. And I will tell you, there is not a proliferation of halfway houses on the east side of Springfield, so that's another myth that we need to discount. So I appreciate your concerns, and I know we all have concerns, and each one of us tries to work very diligently to address those concerns. However, I just think that we have to be very careful about how we talk about certain parts of our city. All of us are working very diligently to bring economic development to the city of Springfield. And when we have these types of blanket inaccurate statements that are out in the public airwaves, it doesn't do those, those activities any good. It doesn't help when we have the Economic Development Council is getting ready to go on a, on a trip to Washington DC to try to bring some economic development back here. These, these types of statements in the public airwaves doesn't help that mission. So we have to be very careful, and we have to be very cognizant of what we say, how we say it, and where we say it.
Yes, that's for, if you are in office, you have to be PEC. I don't have to be. I'm there, I see it, and I know who does it. So you're not out there walking the street like I am?
Yes, I am. Yes, I am. I have been doing...
I've been on the east side just as long as you have.
Let me tell you, let me tell you something, Mr. Beeler. I've been doing community service in, in the neighborhoods on the east side of Springfield for many, many, many years.
I have too.
And it, and it didn't...
I don't get paid for my services.
And it didn't happen, and it didn't happen...
I don't get paid for my services. I don't want to be political correct.
Please don't interrupt me.
If you let her speak, please.
And it didn't happen, because I was...
That's why you told me I'm wrong for seeing where I feel.
And it didn't happen, because I was elected.
I'm being attacked by her.
And it didn't happen, because I was elected to an office. I was elected, that, that, my activity precedes that. And you're talking about walking the neighborhoods?
Yeah, we're having a walk neighborhood.
We all, all day, every day, we all do that.
So if you would get with Deputy Chief, if you'd get with Deputy Chief Hanley, we'd appreciate it. Alderman Simpson?
That's extremely disrespectful, and that should not be tolerated in this chamber.
It is, you know, I...
You're disrespectful.
Hey, if you'd leave, please, thank you. Alderman Simpson?
You know, it's unfortunate to relegate issues to Democratic or Republican, it's...
Inappropriate.
Nothing to do with it. When there's an issue, somebody calls me, I don't ask them if they're Republican or Democrat.
Right.
I attend to whatever the issues are. There are many issues across the city, and I think all of us are working diligently to, to address them. And it's, it is frustrating for residents. But again, I think the city and myself are working to address Ward 2 issues.
Right. Alderman Hanauer?
It seems like the, the theme so far, from the beginning to the end today, was it talking about trash and, and just people's houses, you know, businesses and houses that aren't keeping, keeping things the way they're supposed to. It's kind of been the ongoing theme. I think we need to, we need to get tougher on, on our enforcement, and I think that we need to increase some fines and for these, especially the chronic offenders. I think that they, I think we have a big problem with people that, and I don't care if they're landlords or who, but with people that know how to, how to get around the system. And I think we need to, I think we all have, I don't care what ward you're in, we all have, have houses that, that have chronic people that, that they, it's just amazing how, how they just trash the place. But I think that we need to really look at, real, real hard at our, what, what we charge and our length of enforcement before it has to happen. I don't know if we do a graduated scale, where if it's 30 days to correct it, the next time it's 15, next time it's five. I, I think that we definitely need to take a good, hard look at that, and I don't, I think that, I think that's kind of what we've all been saying tonight, if I'm, if I'm wrong. So with that, you know...
Alderman Conley?
Yeah, I, first of all, Alderman Turner, Hanauer.
I'm Hanauer, that's Turner, right across the...
At least I got a name. No, I, first of all, I just want to agree with you. I've been doing a little bit of walking recently, and absentee landlords is absolutely an issue in my ward. It was brought up repeatedly. This is not just a one neighborhood or, or one area issue. But Alderman Turner, I just want to tell you how much I respect the way you speak of your neighborhood. As you probably, I don't know if you know, my husband's a grade school teacher. He taught at Matheny Withrow. So I was one of the room moms, I guess you could say, because I like doing that. And, and I saw, I saw children in those neighborhoods who were in school to learn, who were, who were coming in against, you know, poverty is not, is not an easy thing to deal with. These kids were working hard. They had parents who cared about them and wanted their success. And, and I really appreciate that you speak up for your ward, that you speak up for the east side, and, and I think it's important that the rest of this, this city stands with you on that. So, thank you.
Is this still the year optimism, or was that last year?
2.0.
Okay, all right. That's checking. Let's do this.
Ramping it up. We're getting ready. We do have another speaker, Julio Baranella, if you'd like to come up, please. Thanks for sticking around. You'd state your name and address for the council, we'd appreciate it.
Good evening, my name is Julio Baranuela, and, uh, council, mayor, thank you for the invitation. Uh, thank you, Alderman Simpson. For the past ten years, specifically when I came back from SIU, I've been wanting to be engaged with the community. The word civic engagement means something to me. If you look around, there's not a lot of Latino residents in this community, uh, coming out and being engaged. In fact, when I was a freshman in college, I met with, uh, the late Senator Paul Simon, and he asked me how can he engage the Latino community in Carbondale to come out to his policy events? And I looked at him very seriously, and I said, "Well, I'm thinking Ricky Martin." And he laughed, and I asked him to suspend this belief. He invites some of the best, brightest legal minds and political minds in the country, he had access to them, but they don't come out. Yet we still use that same model to encourage young, specifically, leadership. However, entertainment is, seems to be something we overlook as a way to bring out certain parts of the community. That is why my masters, when I went out to Los Angeles in order to take this to the next level, is called Media for Social Justice. I come back to Springfield as often as Dick Durbin comes back, on my own dime, 'cause even though I'm out there, I'm utilizing the resources in order to make my community better. People know me as the guy who likes to dance salsa, and it's been a good way to do that. And I've utilized that title, the Salsa Ambassador, which is a proclamation that Mayor Dabbling gave to me ten years ago, to be able to go to either of your wards and not have the doors closed. There's people who don't see themselves as dancers, but there's definitely not a racial tone to it, or discrimination base of, um, of separation between them and me. The reason that I'm here is, uh, I'm also commit, working with the committee for the Downtown Springfield's AMP Concert Series, and it was just a serendipity that I walked in, and they were coordinating it. And they told me that, you know, they were thinking about a Latin concert, but there was obviously no one willing to coordinate it, that they didn't even think about. And I offered to do that. I'm on vacation right now, I start my PhD in September. Having said that, I started to look around the fact that we've had a lot of concerts recently in Springfield. In fact, the Log Festival had sixty, sixty bands, and they proudly said, sixty bands, five stages. And I asked the question, how many of them are Latin? Zero. I'm here because I represent a very underrepresented community, not just the Latino community, but those that like to dance Latin music. For me, Latin music is something that people can do, that allows them to be part of a civic engagement activity, and you don't have to learn how to speak Spanish. I'm an advocate that we, if, we are overlooking the fact that a salsa night in Springfield is more successful in doing everything that we're trying to do when we ever have a diversity training program. That is why I'm here, because I've taken a two-hour concert, I've invited a friend of mine that I made out in LA, the reason I went out there was to meet this major, big artist, one who charges fifteen thousand dollars. And I asked him to do it for five, which was the budget for the AMP Concert Series. In fact, I asked him if he could stay around for an extra day, and I like to show him around and take him around to the Lincoln sites, and if for a couple of thousand dollars, if he could give me a motivational presentation. I borrowed from the Urban League the word empowerment luncheon. Uh, we don't have in the Latino community a building, uh, so I decided to put together an empowerment luncheon around the, the fact that we have a big-name Latin artist here. And when I thought about two thousand dollars, it, to me, it made sense, so I started to call the very people that I meet out in the community who talk a lot about working together as a community. We're talking about UIS, Lincolnland, the Convention and Visitors Bureau was definitely on my mind. And when I reached out to them, however, they said no. And they said no because of budget. They gave me a very good, "We appreciate what you're doing, but, uh, we don't have the money." And that was a theme for ten people, ten institutions that I called, forcing me to create, uh, these tickets, ticket sales, going around doing tickets. I consider myself, as a member of the Citizens Club, very much, uh, as part, a part of trying to bring the community together, regardless of what part of the country, the district you're from. I've had to ask personal favors to raise the money necessary. Uh, I've gotten to half my goal. Um, I wanted to give these tickets out for free. I wanted the community not to think in terms of money, I wanted them to just think in terms of coming out together. Eighty percent of your health is your quality of life. And for the Latino community, we don't have access to Latin music at all. And I think that it's time to set a precedent, and start not just talking about it, but, you know, leveraging the things that are already existing. So I wanted to come here respectfully and say, "Would you help me help them?" We have an opportunity to have this luncheon, but if I don't raise, uh, the other half, and the concert is on Thursday, and then on Friday, then it, it's not that it doesn't happen, it just has to come out of my pocket. And that's not the precedent I wanna set. I don't wanna leave saying, "I tried." I, I know the mayor has made a personal contribution to this. And to me, it's, it's about that. I don't know how long it would take to put in a resolution request. Uh, I was thinking fifteen hundred dollars, I wasn't even thinking in terms of fifteen thousand. But if you guys would like, um, what I've done with my church members and personal friends, has given them the opportunity to purchase ten tickets, uh, to give ten students and ten, and I focusing on certain types of students in the community, if you may allow me. DACA recipients, our Venezuelan refugees, people who are living in the shadows currently, um, and their parents. And it is an opportunity for them to meet you, just like I told, um, Senator Paul Simon, you know? I think an activity like this will bring them out, and it'll give you a chance to meet them. From there, you can engage them. And then they may, if we do this right, be part of our community in the right way, the leadership. Thank you very much.
How much are the tickets?
The tickets are fifteen dollars.
And how many do you need to sell?
So I was, I need to sell, uh, a thousand dollars worth of tickets between now and Friday morning, or Thursday evening.
Okay. I'm going to ask-
How do I get hold of y'all, buy ten tickets for me?
Thank you very much.
I'm gonna ask all of my fellow council members to please buy ten tickets, if you would, just to, to help it out, I mean, and so you can give the tickets away.
I appreciate you very much.
I will write a check for-
Great. Oh, and the check will be written, made out to the only nonprofit in the city of Springfield, it's called CIELO, C-I-E-L-O, who provides scholarships to our Central Illinois students to go to UIS, Lincolnland, as well as the SIU School of Medicine. And the way that they raise money throughout the year is with hosting salsa nights once a month. If you've never had a chance to go, it's the last Saturday of the month at Azteca Mexican Restaurant. My mother and I, my mother Rosa, uh, we spent the past three weeks, um, you know, going out there and doing this, and we look forward to spending the next twenty-four hours giving these tickets, um, personally to these young people, and you'll see the smiles when I tell them that this is a city effort for them to come out.
You should've mentioned Rosa was involved right away, that would've changed everything. She's-
Could, uh, could we just drop our check off to, to-
Yep.
Council Coordinator, and then-
How do you make the check out?
Oh, CIELO. It's sky in Spanish, C-I-E-L-O.
So-
And how much are ten tickets?
A hundred and fifty dollars would be ten tickets, that'd be amazing.
So we're gonna drop a check off to the course of Council Coordinator's office, that's where you gotta go pick up the money, okay?
Thank you, Alderman Redbough, I appreciate that.
It'll be tomorrow, it'll have to be- Yeah, I don't have a check with-
Most definitely, thank you. And on behalf of my graduating class of Lampier, nineteen ninety-nine, it means something.
There's, there's, it goes wide.
Oh, sorry about that. I have a, I say this to you out of my heart, we have our high school reunion in, on, on Saturday. And for me to be able to, to stand here and tell you this, it's, it's a full circle for me, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Does anybody else wish to address the council?
Yeah.
If there are motions for adjournment?
Second.
Been moving second, I'll favor say aye.